This conference will now be recorded.
Well, tonight, we're starting our Wednesday, June 8th, 2022, City Council meeting. We welcome everyone and thank you for attending. Let's begin by standing and pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Casper?
Here.
Councilmember Boyle?
Present.
Councilmember Strobin?
Absent, excused.
Mayor Protem Servini?
Present.
My name is Citizens Public Comment. Any public comments from the audience?
I don't believe we have any today.
Don't you?
Al Phyllow, 152 West 15th Street. Well, I went to the community center on Saturday, and I ran into a guy I hadn't seen in many, many years. I'm going to this 1957. And we got to talking about the senator and what's come about. And he mentioned a John Pollock water trail over here. And he's a kayaker, but he can't get into his kayak because he's 71 years old and a little stove up. And so he was wondering, or we got to talking, he said, yeah, they put a dock in there, you know, something that handicap people could have access, you know, to the kayak launch there. And I said, well, there's a city council meeting coming up. And he said, well, I don't know about that thing. But I said, I know somebody who does, and they'll say something, you know? So I don't know what something like that would cost. I mean, I don't use the water park over there. I did drive down there and take a look at it. It seemed like pretty primitive. And, you know, the guy just loved to be kayaking, but he just can't get into the kayak anymore. Well, that's about all I have to say. Thank you. God bless America.
Thanks for sharing that. Do we have anyone online that needs to...
If you're online and you want to speak, okay, if you're online and you want to speak, you have to push star six.
I'll see if I go. Number used hands. Takes us into consent agenda. If there's no requests for any items to be removed, may we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed extensions? Motion here again. Thank you. Takes, we don't have any presentations this evening. Takes us into the mayor's report. Just want to remind everyone that the offices will be closed Monday, June 20th, in observance for duty, which is National Independence Day. There will also be ribbon cutting coming up for stylo barber, and that's this Saturday at 1:00 P.M. So we encourage everyone to come welcome them to town. And another ribbon cutting scheduled for Wednesday, June 22nd, at 11:30 A.M. up at the Rock Reef at the Junction area. So we'll be doing the ribbon cutting and all of that business as well. We've got graduation coming up. And so I just want to remind everybody that clearly there will be an evening of team cars on the road. And, you know, just be cautious, be careful if you have graduating seniors, brand kids. Remind them to be safe for that evening. We end up each year seeing many teams get injured and killed. And we don't want to see that happen in our community at all. So that's all I have to report. Takes us to a trannies report. And City Attorney Crofton Carter.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, everybody. I have a couple of things. One is related to Riverside State subdivision. And so I don't know how much that's been under radar screen by council. It's definitely not mine. It's taken a lot of work. But the good news is we are, we've got line at the end of the toll. And what's been holding up the finalization of the second phase of that subdivision is the fact that there were liens imposed on tracks that we had utility infrastructure on. And utility easements over. And so we weren't willing to finalize the plat for Phase Two as long as those liens were in place. So probably what I've been working on is we got a court order that approved the sale of those tracks and Phase Four part, free and clear of bendings. And we are now in the process of going through title reports and doing everything that we need to do to make those conveyances happen. And so I think we'll have the conveyance of the utility tracks and streets free and clear of liens done in the next month. And then the Phase Four part, probably the month after that. And then river park completion about in that same time period.
That's great.
So good news is it'll be hopefully on my air, and I can stop billing you for all the time it's taken me to deal with that subdivision. So good news on Riverside Estates. The other I'd like to talk about is I saw that you received an invitation from the Will Center Church to attend a function on some dates in July. So I'd just like to talk about that and the Open Public Meeting Act implications of that. So I know at this point, you may not know if you're attending or not because there were multiple dates given. But if a majority of the council, three or more of you, are going to be present at that event, I suggest that we do a notice of a special meeting of the council. And in that notice, based say, from what I read in the email, that the purpose of the meeting is simply to address questions from the community. Something as generic as that. But even if we notice it and we give that description of what action is going to be in that meeting, it's important to keep in mind some best practices with respect to council members attending events and when you're going to have a majority of the council on that event. And rule or best practice number one would be, don't have a majority of the council sitting at the same table if they're on tables. Want to kind of get it together. Because inevitably, people aren't going to want to talk to you about the same business. And if you have three or more of you participating in the conversation about that, it's really not one of the items that we noticed that are interesting questions. You come around the risk, not a public discussion. Yeah, and it's not a public discussion. So if you're going to attend and if there's a majority, let's do it in this. Be separate. It's fine for you to talk to your constituents about questions that they have about the city. What, where we run into a problem is if we have three or more council members interacting and discussing city business together, so they're collective discussion.
Could we propose in our reply and council discussion as well, would it be an opportunity for us to maybe see what our schedules are like, what dates work for each of us? And maybe just have two of us there at a time and then still have that?
Yeah, so if there's less than a forum, there's no, you wouldn't have to do it. You wouldn't have to discuss.
But we could still have that interaction with the community.
That's another approach, just in fact, well, let's just have two council members.
Or people's lives. Isn't that we could be there throughout the farmer's market, not just one day? If that's a minimal.
Yeah, we can look at the dates. I mean, I hope, I saw soccer tournaments every weekend. I hope there's one in there that I can make, so.
They were Thursday.
Oh, was there some Thursday?
Oh.
Oh, okay, never mind. Yeah, that's easy. All right, I'll cut it quickly.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I guess I could go either way. It doesn't really matter to me, but I guess this is kind of what it works for a pretty schedule, so I don't know.
Yeah, I know a lot of you have kids' activities and things. I thought that might be an option for us to still maintain the interaction, but do it on a schedule that works for everybody. Getting us all together in the same meeting sometimes is a bit of a struggle.
Exactly.
So if it's okay for you, I can reply with that option.
Yeah, that at least two of us would make it to. Yeah.
And you guys can let me know if they're available and I can.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Thanks.
That's all I have.
Thanks for going through that. Professional direction is always good. Next, we have council comments, and we're starting out with you, Councilmember Cox.
Hello, good evening. It's nice to see it's getting lighter out, or staying lighter out later. It's getting hotter sooner. Not much to say tonight, other than it's good to see some new faces out here. And also upcoming on Monday, June 20th, at the High School Stadium, there is a group of the L.C. Boosters, the Education Foundation, the Levy Committee, the A.S.B., the superintendent, and just a lot of the community supporters are going to be putting together a free barbecue on that Monday, June 20th again. So they're going to be sharing information about the stadium and progress will be forward with that. And just, it's a great time to come together as a community and talk about the future of the Center Schools and the community and where we're headed. So hope we all can join. I'm taking work, excuse me, I'm taking time off work, so I'm excited to come. So I hope everybody else finds time to go shopping with the cup. That's all I have this evening. Thanks.
Councilmember Casper?
I don't have a whole lot tonight. I was looking at the audience, and I noticed that Al was holding a cup. And then I saw that there's a coffee mug over there. So your request to finally, unless you brought it.
That was last week. Where were you? Two weeks ago.
It was here then?
Yeah.
All right, I'm glad you got some coffee.
Hi, Brian.
I. No, I don't have anything additional tonight, so thank you, everybody, for coming.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, just thank everybody for coming out tonight. I got something that was sent to me on behalf of the Levy Committee. And it says, I'd like to bring you the attention to the citizens of the Center, the school campaign to build and promote positivity in our community. With all the things going on in the world today, we live in this gem of a town with what I think are some of the finest people on planet. They have for sale here this evening. Peter and Craig are back there. I love the Center yard signs, and I heart the Center window stickers. This is a great way for you as individuals to amplify a sense of civic pride in the Will Center community that we all know and love. You can see Ross or Pete after this meeting, or reach out to Ross Higgins at r.mhiggins@gmail.com. And they'd be happy to deal with one of these great looking yard signs or window stickers. That's pretty much all I got.
Pass the word.
How much are the signs? $10.
$10 for sure.
Yeah, they look great, you guys. Good job. Okay, that takes us into staff report. So let's start off with Brian Cast, and he'll be presenting our community development staff report this evening for us.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, council. So a few items to highlight here on the community development staff report this evening. The first is we have updated our map numbering, pulled up some projects.
Brian, can you hold the mic? I don't think everybody can hear you.
Oh, the buttons do something.
Yeah, they do.
Apologize about that. So the first item on the report, I'll draw your attention to, is that we've updated our numbering system. Some projects that were no longer active or reading and haven't seen a lot of action on recently have been pulled off of the current active list, and we've adjusted numbers accordingly. So now number one on there is the Lockwood Creek subdivision. We had a public hearing on that project middle of last month. And the hearings and the report has gone out to all interested parties. And that project, preliminary plat for that is completed this time. Heritage Builder B across the street here, occupancy for that had expired, but we worked through the process and got occupancy, I believe, granted on that early this week. So that one is now complete. Minute management, we have seen a final plat application come in from that, and building permit reviews are ongoing. I guess we'll talk about that in the public works staff report here shortly as well. Highland Terrace, we completed the final plat of that, Phase One of that a few months ago. There's some homes beginning to be constructed in there, which is coming through its building permits and keeping our building official, Mr. Wilson, busy. So that's exciting to see. Riverside, as City Attorney mentioned, we're nearing, hopefully, the end of the long process to get that out of receivership. Another piece of that is the playground that's under construction. Before your last meeting discussing the development agreements, and that playground has been progressing. It's nearing completion at this time. The rubberized surfacing is in place. They're working on irrigation and landscaping, and there's some of the remaining pieces of that playground, and it's looking really great. Stevens Hillside, it's an 85-watt subdivision that's in the works. We are under engineering review on that one. And then the final one that I will draw your attention to is number 38, the Timmins Landing. That was one that was a pre-application earlier this year for some apartments. We actually met with the applicant this afternoon, had a very productive meeting about potential to bring forward a code amendment. So we may be seeing something on that here very shortly. But that, happy to answer any questions about the community development staff.
Questions for council? All right. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Now we'll lead us into public works staff report.
And I was thinking I may want to combine these. I've been giving two separate ones each time here, and I'll just squish them together maybe next time. So on the public works side, in streets, there's been a lot of cold mix patching going on for pot pour repairs on an ongoing basis. We also did a little bit of work over at the former community development slash bank building. We're having a water leak and patching over there to get that ready to be leased out. Parks and grounds, we continue to struggle with the continued rainfall and the wet spring that we've had here. It's been making mowing a challenge. We've also lost a few trees down in Sterling Park where the ground's saturated. And we have winds that blow over, which is unfortunate. But we will be replacing and replanting those as we have an opportunity to. We have also been getting our riverfront parks ready for the summer boom and have graded and renovated the parking lots and placed portable restrooms, both at Pollock Park and at the sort of unnamed Under the Bridge Park. And we have fertilized the parks. On the wastewater treatment plant side, there's quarterly sampling that's ongoing. We also have done a few maintenance projects down there. Some regular maintenance of replacing transducers, repairing motors. And most excitingly, our membrane bioreactors, which are really the heart of the treatment plant, are due to be replaced this year. And those started showing up earlier this week. So my next staff report, so I can give you an update. We expect to complete that work in July, when hopefully the rains have passed us by because we'd like to have low as blows as possible as we take one of those two reactors offline to be able to work on them. And I'll plant this in your head if anyone's interested in coming and taking a look at that process and touring our wastewater treatment plant. We'd love to show you how that all works. It's not as bad as it sounds. It's actually kind of cool, at least for an engineering dork like me. So on the admin side too, we have a new wastewater three operator that we're very excited to have. He started middle of last month. He's already well up to speed and is doing rounds and sampling. So we're very excited to have some extra help down there and some redundancy so that staff can go on vacation and not have to cover three weeks on call shifts like we were having before when we only had two folks. So that's great news for our treatment plant down there. The building department side, year to date, we have issued 49 building permits, including six single-family residents, two commercial projects. At the request of the Mayor Protem and some other council members, we have added comparison to this point. Last year, we are down in number of permits last year, but that's, I think, largely due to the fact that we had used up all of our vacant buildable lots. And until recently, here with the plat of Highland Terrace, didn't have any lots to build on. So as we have approved that final plat, as I mentioned earlier, we've seen increasing plans coming through. We have seen uptick in single-family permits as well. And we expect that to continue throughout the summer here, as we have Riverside and others come online as well. And then on the minute management, I think I mentioned this earlier, but if not, I'll hit it again. So we have ongoing structural review on that, but they are responding to comments. And so that seems to be moving forward. And they also came in this week for a final plat request. So all indications after that project kind of going silent for a while is that it's back in action and moving forward, which is exciting for the city.
Do they have any projected dates for that?
For the, it's like a groundbreaking or something? Not that I've heard, but that's something that we could check into. And if we get any information, we'll definitely bring that.
Just get lots of questions about it, so.
Yeah, we're all excited to see something happening out there, for sure.
I have a question. Is this good?
Sure.
Should I wait till the end or? And it's back a few bullet points about the graffiti. I know we're having like a lot of increase in that, and it's like, you know, obviously just really crude things. I was just wondering what happens to, because I know somebody had taken a picture. Somebody had kind of identified, we do know, is there fines there? Like, what does, how do they get, I mean, if the.
Yeah, so we're, you know, any tips like that?
How can they crack down on that by like getting those?
We're getting those to the police department so they can investigate and contact folks. Chief, if you determine, would be great because there has been a lot of graffiti, as you mentioned. And at least to my knowledge, it's been sort of a mystery. No one's been moved, caught in the act, or hasn't been any individuals identified.
Oh, it's maybe post-malice center families. And I know the individual, but I just, I don't, I more care about just, you know, keeping the town and not having kids see those kind of words.
Absolutely.
But I just saw that somebody else took a picture of it, posted, and, you know, it was a big, you know, conversation. But, you know.
Okay, and as public works, you know, we get notification, you know, people report it, and we get out there immediately and cover it.
Sure, yeah, I appreciate that, yeah.
And we're also in the works on getting, trying to get some cameras operational out there at the skate park and other park locations.
Maybe some of that money we got to renovate this community center? Put some cameras up on that?
Yeah, that's actually something we're looking into. And we also, a couple of meetings ago, we're authorized to proceed with a Holly Park grant for the playground down there. We actually gave some presentations to the board for feedback so we can hone our presentation, but that's something that we're looking.
Right, because I think it's just a few same individuals, you know? And if we could kind of head away back and, you know, just kind of set the, yeah, tone for that, so, thank you.
Absolutely. So last thing I have here is engineering. And so we have bids received for the Center Road project. That'll be the next item on the agenda here for you to consider with the consent agenda. We have the guardrail replacements, you replace some damaged guardrails. And thank you for your action on that. So we'll be moving forward, getting that contract underway. And then we have a request for qualifications out currently for a shared use path along Pacific Highway. And as we wrap that up, that's a federally funded grant project to completely design that. And hopefully get an engineering firm selected and on board to begin that work here in the near future. Happy to answer any other questions with the night.
I don't have any other questions. I just want to say, I just noticed something the other day. Holly Park is busy as it is right now. It looks great, but just with the amount of parking cars coming in and out of there, I did notice a few of the parking spots were kind of held up by low hanging tree branches. That was something that, I mean, we could look into just so we can free up some of those spaces.
Absolutely.
And questions or comments? All right, Brian, we'll turn you over for the structure paving bid staff report.
Thank you again. So if you recall from when council authorized the city staff to bid this project, we have received a Transportation Improvement Order, TIB, grant for a portion of this project. It includes paving of the western 12 feet of the Center Road and a two-inch grind inlay of the roadway. In addition to that grant-funded work, the city is doing some pavement beyond what the grant could fund, pavement work beyond what the grant could fund, including an additional one-inch overlay, some repairs and digouts of areas that are heavily damaged and distressed, and then installation of a drainage system to convey water out of the road subgrade so that we don't have future failures like we've seen out there. So all the paving work for this project was under Schedule A of the bid. And then in conjunction with this work, we have worked with Hart Public Utilities to construct a 12-inch waterline that will double the size of the waterline that's, almost double the size of the waterline that's feeding the downtown area here to meet the needs of the growing city. So the contractors bid with that work as well to realize an economy of scale. We, with the council's blessing, entered into an agreement with CPU for that. And then finally, that was Schedule B. And then finally, Schedule C is concrete barriers along the gravel parking area there to limit how vehicles are able to enter and exit that and to hopefully improve safety and reduce the amount of turning movements that are sort of happening along that stretch of roadway there, which is Schedule C of the work. So we bid this project on May 6th. We received four bids. The lowest bid was submitted by Advanced Excavating Special Leaks, or ADS, as they're commonly known out of Pelso. The project overall came in under the engineer's estimate. The engineer's estimate was $730,000. The total bid, including all the schedules, was $707,000. Schedules A and B came in under the engineer's estimate, and Schedule C came in a little bit higher due to higher than anticipated costs of the concrete K-rail or Jersey barrier material. Of the overall project funding, TIB will provide $140,000 for the overlay portion. And the remaining $81,000 of Schedule A will be city funds. Schedule B, as I mentioned, will be funded in whole by Hart Public Utilities and totally reimbursed. And then Schedule C, $56,000, would also be local funds. I believe in the 2022 approved budget, there's $60,000 to this project on local funds. So as we come forward with the budget amendment for this year, we will have to be asking for an additional $20,000 or so in matching for the grant, just the way the bids came out. And then if council elects to award Schedule C, we would also to set aside some funds for that. So with that, happy to answer any questions that the council might have before you consider award of this project.
I have a question. Right now, we're taking council comments. So we'll get to community comments, but we'll need you to identify yourself when you do. There's no community comments. I take that back. Good. All right, council, questions, comments?
Is there a map of what's to be paved on?
There is. Well, there's a map of the parking area. So the paving actually extends basically from the west side of the bridge outward up to approximately Timmins Road area. The waterline starts there. There's flow stations of all that, basically, that whole area. Roadway will be constructed in anticipation of some, a little bit more, having a visual for what's planned at the parking area there with Schedule C. This sort of shows a layout of what that would look like. So if council recalls, we originally considered doing some concrete barriers along the, off the shoulder. There'd be six feet or so off the shoulder of the roadway there. We also, based on council feedback, had in some raised delineators to prevent an illegal left turn into the area there. Basically, the intent of this is to isolate so that traffic that's entering and exiting this area, you can enter in one spot, it's like right in and right out, basically, to help control some of the traffic turning movements that we see out there.
Was there any thought to put into adjusting this speed limit on that portion of the road between the bridge and Timmin Road?
That could be something that we look at, conduct a traffic study and look at the speeds and volumes of that roadway, generally to adjust the speed limit, there has to be a traffic study that goes along with it, but that's something that if the council is interested in, we can completely have the equipment and staff to be able to do that.
Because if I remember correctly, it's, that's a, it's fifty miles per hour if you're heading eastbound, basically, all the way up to the bridge where it drops down to twenty-five.
Yeah, I believe the west side of the bridge is the transition, or, excuse me, the east side of the bridge is the transition, after you cross the bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Brian, I guess, I have two questions, one goes back to the construction project itself, and generally in the past, we've dropped the speed limit through that area when we're in this underway.
Oh, yes, for, during construction, construction traffic control will be in place that lowers the speed limit, as far as a permanent speed, I should clarify, as far as a permanent speed change.
So we'll be extending that lower speed limit out, how far?
It would encompass the whole work area, so roughly from the bridge to Timmin Road, while construction's underway.
That makes more sense to me.
And then if we decide, if there was some desire to evaluate permanently changing that speed, then we'd kind of do the traffic study that I mentioned earlier.
I think it is worth investigating, you know, researching because of the safety aspect and the increased years of our teens and our kids through that area, through the summer months, kayaking and boating and, you know, you see all sorts of families and kids walking through there as well to get down in the park. So I think if we look at all of those aspects, as far as the overall speed limit and where we adjust that going forward, as we grow, it's going to be, continue to be used more and more. And so I think we're adjusting how we, how we factor where that speed limit begins and ends probably helpful, my thought.
Yeah, I agree, I'm just curious about the construction of the concrete barrier right there along the parking, gravel parking area, is it going to be like a Jersey barrier, like, you know?
Yeah.
Possibly, I'm kind of about that, though. And then with the, I see with the channel gates, are those going to be locked on a daily, weekly?
So I think the idea was that during non, sort of, summer use, we could keep that area closed and, you know, prevent sort of informal use of it, and then during the summer, when there's a lot of public coming down there, we could open that area up. So during, like, most of the year
Kind of seasonal.
It's seasonal, exactly. So there, you could see there on the right side, there's some parking spaces in sort of that whitest spot closest to the bridge, that and the parking area below would remain open all year long, and then sort of as needed for overflow parking during heavy use periods, you could open up that sort of skinnier area there to the left.
So just, I mean, looking at it, was, if you did have during offseason that one park closed off, people to get out of that area, would that mean they, they probably have to make the legal turn to get out of there?
So the, the main entrance sort of in line with the driveway down to the lower parking area would be the right in, right out, you couldn't turn left with the raised delineer that's there, it's sort of like what you see along the school, where they have the curb with the candles, as they're known. When it's operational, the skinny parking area, for lack of a better term, would be sort of a one-way and have an exit, so you turn right into the parking lot in line there with the driveway, you proceed along that park, and then you can leave at the far left side or far west side of the parking lot.
And for this part of the project, what we have budgeted, or what we would need passed up, what was living?
So this Schedule C wasn't included in the twenty-twenty-two budget, it's something that came up as we were kind of designing the project and sort of added in, so the bid for this portion was fifty-six thousand, so that would be something that would have to be recognized during a budget amendment to allocate money for this portion of the project, if it's awarded.
And that's going to be completed at the end of the other work?
It would all happen at the same time, so this area will be used by the contractor for staging of equipment materials during construction, and then they'll be working on this along with the rest of the project. We did require that the contractor start after school, that's, and then so we're not interfering with bus traffic, so it's kind of hard to say exactly, once we award this, we'll get a contractor, or schedule for the contractor to go with materials, supply chain and stuff, it's, we don't have a great idea, it may take a little while to get the pipe and the other materials on hand for this project.
And just because we have new council members, I want to mention that we will regularly throughout the year, usually at the end of the year, do a budget amendment, so that's regular, you know, people.
I guess my question, I mean, this is a great idea, the theory and everything, but just with some of the issues that we're facing financially, I don't know if this is, I mean, though it'd be fifty-six thousand dollars, whatever it is, I don't know if it's something that we really want to tackle at this point, but, I mean, I guess, that's
Sure.
What's the, what's the main goal? What's the main reason?
I think the main goal was, again, controlling of the turning movements, right now it's sort of just a wide, unregulated area, people can kind of come and go from whichever portion of it they want, to turn left and right out of it, so it's sort of confining the entrance and exits to one or two defined points
Sure.
and limiting those turning movements in and out, so, okay, it's a council's discretion to award some or all of this project, and so that's why we're here presenting it to you.
It just seems like a little silly right now.
It is, you know, but I think it would be even more expensive to try to go back as an individual project and do it, so that's the predicament that we're in when we look at each of these projects, is what makes the most financial sense in terms of accomplishing the end goal, keeping everybody safe, and using that area for its intended purpose in conjunction with the park. So it becomes, you know, broader, and should be really considered across the board.
Yeah, that's a fair statement, you know, we could always come back and do this later, but as part of a, as its own standalone project, the cost would like to be a little bit more just because the contractor has to bring all their equipment out there, and there's costs to do that.
Is that something where we could get a separate bid for a different time? I mean, just to see what the, you know, cost benefit is, doing it now versus doing it in a year, or?
So I guess, I think to answer your question, if, if it's not awarded tonight, it's certainly something that we can, you know, save these plans and revive them in the future, you know, and we have to see at that time what the bid prices came at.
I mean, I think looking at like a speed limit adjustment, maybe in our veteran interest right now, the overall construction of what is proposed right there is not much to it, in my opinion.
I want to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just
I'm just going to add, I mean, we don't really have a huge history of accidents there, do we?
Yeah, I think after the, the question was asked, when we were talking about this last time, I think there was an accident that was found in the last several years of this area.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not so much historical, it's just as we continue to grow and the traffic increases and the use for the park has been added.
I almost see it slowing down traffic more and causing more congestion, because people are like, ugh, trying to look and trying to get into that little, you know, as opposed to just, I don't know, kind of going when they can, taking that left when they can, or taking, you know, obviously the right when they can, or there, there are controls, and now it's going to just congest in a one area, and these cars, and those cars, and everybody's going to be, you know, and
What part of the bid is the tough curve?
That one, that's all, all this work that you see here is part of Schedule C. So if council were to award, just as Schedules A and B, we do the paving, CP would do the water line, and then this work would not take place, but basically the improvements to the parking area are all contained in Schedule C work.
Is there restoration work included into the bid with A and B? I mean, just considering they're going to be using that area first.
Yeah, so they would have to, you know, clean up the area and regrade it, you know, move gravel around the long.
Yes. Any questions?
My only other comments, I think, A and B are absolutely a no-brainer and necessary, but with this section, I think personally I would rather see it waiting until, to either, you know, see what another bid would look like, or I can just table it for another time, I guess.
Yeah, I think especially in working up the vendors and working out that situation, it's not really that desirable of a swim pool, it's not like amazing access to the water that everybody wants to be there, it's, it's not that desirable, people go there because they know it and they are willing to park, but then they walk down, they usually just swim, there are kayaks and stuff over there, maybe some floaties, but, I don't know, I just, I don't see it.
There are, in the mornings.
Sure. I don't know, it's just a lot of money. Yeah, we don't have
So in this
Well, I do think, I do think that's the Addressing the, the speed limit along there would, I think it would do as much, if not more, than the, the Jersey barriers. I'm not opposed to this project, but I also agree with the other council members that it is, it is somewhat of a nice to have, not a absolutely necessary, so if I were to propose something, I would say that we approve the first and second, or the A and B, and then request the, the study for the speed limit and, I guess my next question would be, at what point during the construction would they actually be doing the work for Schedule C?
My, my guess is that they would order all the materials, you know, once the contract is awarded, you know, it's always possible to add something back in, but, you know, there could be potentially some additional costs if they, you know, need to special overstep or expedite or something to meet the construction schedule, we would elect to do it later this year, and then, you know, as mentioned earlier, we can always, you know, save these plans and we could have this other project in the future potentially too.
Questions, a cost to do a speed survey or?
We can do it with staff resources, so there wouldn't really be any additional costs.
That's okay.
Yeah.
I would do a word of bid from AES LLC for Schedules A and B in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and twenty nine cents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in our second to award the bid from AES LLC for Schedules A and B in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and twenty nine cents. All those in favor?
Hi.
I'm Motion, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Good discussion.
Thanks for your time on that, I know that probably took a lot of time
Absolutely, happy to help.
And I think it is a good idea to table it for, you know, another project, opportunity.
And we'll move forward with the speed study, and then we can
Yeah, because I think we can do a lot with just a little right now.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Brings us to building height code, and Ethan Spoo will present this report.
Good evening, council, tonight I'm going to be talking with you about the city's update to its code for the definition of building height. This update is needed to resolve a conflict in the code between Titles Fifteen, which is the city's building code, and Title Eighteen, which is the city's development code, and those two titles have two conflicting definitions in them. And what that has meant is that the city might approve a land use application based upon a certain building height, and then later on, when the building permits are submitted, then a different definition of building height is applied, and that results in conflict in what the building height is. And so as you might know, development review comes prior to land use review, usually comes prior to building permit review, and so that, that's the process that results from that conflict, when you have the development permit review happening later, and those two different definitions. So to resolve that situation, staff and the planning commissioner are recommending the development code in Title Eighteen be amended to match the definition of building height in Title Fifteen in the International Building Code, which is incorporated into Title Fifteen. The definition of building height in the, in the International Building Code is also a little bit more straightforward, and in my opinion, easier to, to understand, and so that's another reason for the update. So I wanted to discuss with you just briefly what some of the differences are between the existing definition of building height in Title Eighteen and then the proposed definition that's before you tonight. The existing definition measures height from a base point to the highest point of the coping of a flat roof, or to the deck line of a mansard roof, or to the average height with the highest gable of a pitched or hip roof. So that's a little bit of a mouthful, but basically you're measuring from this, this base point, which I'll describe here in a second, from this base point to the top highest point of the roof, or in some cases, the average height of the roof, when you have a pitched or gable roof. And the base point is the highest ground surface within five feet of the building walls, if the point is not more than ten, if that point is not more than ten feet above grade, if the ground surface is higher than ten feet of the elevation of joint in building, the base point is automatically set at ten feet above grade. So that's what, that's what the existing definition says. The proposed definition, which as I said, is maybe just a little bit easier to understand, hopefully, you're measuring to the average height of the highest roof surface from what's called grade plane, and grade plane is essentially the average ground level during the building walls, and there's some, a little bit of variety as to how grade plane applies as well. So when the ground slopes away from the building, grade plane is the lowest point between the building and the lot line, or if the lot line's further than six feet away, then it's automatically set at six feet away. So there is a couple of graphics, which I'm hoping maybe makes this a little bit clearer to you in the staff report. We don't have a graphic showing how the existing building height is measured, but this is how the proposed building height can be measured. So what that's showing there on the bottom, sort of of that, that building, that, that house, is the high point of the ground, and then the low point, and then you're taking the midpoint or the average of that ground to establish grade plane. And similarly with the roof, that pitched roof, you're taking the high point and the low point, averaging that, and finding the average height, so you're essentially measuring an average to average to find what the height of that, that building is. And then the second graphic, just one half-page down there, shows you how grade plane is measured in different situations. So essentially, you measure six feet away from the building when the property line is more than six feet away, or if the property line is less than six feet away, then you use the, then you use the property line. So with that, staff and the planning commissioner are recommending that the council open a public hearing and accept public comments on ordinance and approve ordinance twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash zero five, amending the definition of building height in LC NC eighteen dot forty dot zero ten. That'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ethan. We will go ahead and open up the public hearing, comments. Anyone here this evening, the audience that has comments, please come to the podium and give your name. Anyone here this evening, the audience that has comments, please come to the podium and give your name and address and then we'll move forward with questions from council as well. No one's rushing to the podium.
About this or just in general?
Right, right.
It would be about this.
About this, no.
About this, okay. Well, I will close the.
We need to ask online.
Yeah, online, I apologize.
Press star six to unmute yourself, please.
I'd like to speak also on the phone.
Go ahead, Kimberly.
Was that for me, Kimberly?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, thank you. I, so let me, let me get to the. So this is from the city of La Center. And it says the city of La Center is updating the definition of the building height in the code to match what is contained in the international building code. The new definition will measure, and then it goes on to say what it will do. So my concern is that the international building code, you're fitting this to contain into an international building code, which follows along the line of what I've been battling with the Vancouver City Council being fourteen-year members of the United Nations entity called the ICLI or called International, I'll use that word again, International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives. So when you pass everything, they're going to fall under this environmental issue. Can you hear me? I'm hearing a lot of background.
We can hear you.
Thank you. I'm hearing a lot of background in the background. So Vancouver is, we're actively trying to get them out of a communistic tyranny government there in Vancouver. But then also, let me put here. So, so when people, and I want to talk to the public, when the public sees words like Green New Deal or sustainability, equity, inclusion, and there's more, those, those are entities that follow the United Nations. And I'd like to also say that the La Center city is connected with La Center United. I want to let the public know also that La Center United is not only with the city here, but also affiliated with the church here in town. And I want the public to know that they are funded by the federal government. They are the ESD K-12. And they are funded by, by the government, trying to push the international CRT agendas through any programs that look good to us, you know, get kids off drugs. But the LC United is part of this agenda. And that is, in my opinion, also, please do not fertilize any longer where children and adults are going to go barefoot. That stuff is toxic and it's also toxic to animals, especially when it's wet. And it, it's bad when it's dry. Also, let's see, I wrote something else here. The local funding you get is, is from unknown tax payers and then the.
Kimberly.
Is grants that must comply to the ICLI.
Just, just, you know, summarize your comments and it's three minutes.
Yes. Okay, well, I also wanted to ask about if the La Center has bad lead pipes. We need to look into that. And where does our water go that you say is clean? It goes down the river, but.
Thank you, Kimberly. We're going to stay on topic here. Any other public comments coming for us? All right. We will close the public hearing section and open it up for council questions and comments.
I was just curious, so does this include residential and commercial or would this just be one or the other?
It would, it would include both. And so you would then be measuring them in that, in the same way, since you would be eliminating a conflicting definition. But you would still have a height standard set in each district, usually in residential districts. That's thirty-five feet. Sometimes in commercial districts, it's, it's higher than that. And we're not proposing to change the height standards here tonight.
Just some question.
And just to make sure, so this is updating section eighteen forty oh one oh to the international building code. Is the other minimum code that you had mentioned earlier already compliant with the international?
Yeah, that's title fifteen, Buildings in Construction. And that incorporates or adopts the international building code into it, which contains this definition.
Would there be any current construction that would be in conflict with any of this changing?
Mm-hmm, no.
Right, I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero five, amending the definition of building height in section eighteen point four zero point zero one zero of the municipal code definitions to match the international building code.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second to approve, adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two national five, amending the definition of building height from section eighteen dot forty dot zero one zero of the municipal code definitions to match international building code. Since this, I'd like to ask the clerk to take rule, vote on this one, please.
Council member Fox.
Present.
I'm sorry, yes. I knew that wasn't what you say.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Council member Casper.
Yes.
Council member Boyle.
Yes.
Council member Strobin.
Gotcha.
Mayor Pro Tem Servity.
Yes.
So because we've heard additional comments from the planner, if we wanted to reopen a public comment, we can, right? But we, that would have been before we did that.
No, just general public.
Oh, just general public, sure, yeah.
Pride of your journey, I think we should.
Yeah. I think that's fair. I think there's somebody.
Additional public comment following the planner's comments?
You can have a public comment if you wanted to make earlier.
I don't think we probably have talked more than.
Okay.
I'm sorry, didn't hear. All right. Motion, Karen. Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Helping us get through that and actually clarify things from staff and from the builders that come before us. Any items to come before us, the unfinished business or entertaining a motion to close the meeting? That's all I have on my agenda. So vote, sorry. All right. We are in chair and thank you, everyone, for coming and working through these coming due to the ordinance. I'm going to be.
Exciting building height.
Appreciate that.